And see your conversation so we can get the business done. I want to call this joint meeting of the Torrance City Council and the Torrance Social Services Commission to order. City Clerk, may we have a roll call please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Chen.
Present.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Here.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Here.
Councilmember Herring.
Here.
Councilmember Matucci.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Here.
Mayor Fury.
Here.
Commissioner Bickford.
Here.
Commissioner Kyoto.
Commissioner Gao.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Layes.
Commissioner Reagans.
Chair Scotto.
Thank you. Everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Place your hand on your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, may we have a report on the post of the agenda?
Your Honor, this agenda was posted on Thursday, October 24th.
Thank you. The first portion of this evening is a joint meeting between the City Council and the Social Services Commission, continued from October 15th. This joint meeting has a focus on homelessness, one of the four populations under the purview of this commission. Staff will give a brief recap of the initial joint meeting. After that, we will take questions from Council and Commission, and then from members of the public. There are speaker cards available should you wish to speak on this item. The speaker cards for the joint meeting are blue. The yellow speaker cards are for the special city council meeting, which will immediately follow the joint meeting. Please be aware that the joint meeting will continue until all parties have had an opportunity to be heard. The special city council meeting will commence no earlier than 8:00 PM, but will be called in order after the joint meeting has been adjourned. Please note that there is supplemental correspondence and additional information that's been made available after the posting of the agenda, and copies can be found at the table in the lobby. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff. Ms. Maggardishian?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Dominica Maggardishian with the City Manager's Office. The Torrance City Council and Social Services Commission held a joint meeting on October 15th, 2019, as a response to City Council's request to host an information meeting to address the issue of increasing homelessness in the city. At that meeting, Commission updated the Council on efforts and accomplishments of the Commission toward the priorities and goals set forth in the Commission work plan, which was presented to City Council on November 22nd, 2016. These updates are summarized in the staff report before you. Commission liaisons followed the Commission's presentations with an update on City Department's efforts in addressing homelessness and staff training. The Torrance Police Department presented on the community lead officer detail, outreach and enforcement efforts, and the constrictions and limitations of ordinances and policies over the last few years, with the passing of AB 109, Prop 47, and the implications of the recent ruling of Martin versus City of Boise. Finally, Nancy Wilcox, co-chair of South Bay Coalition to End Homelessness, discussed the demographics and what homelessness looks like presently in the city of Torrance. Due to the significant amount of information presented at that joint commission meeting, City Council did not have enough time to discuss the presentation, receive public comment, and take action on the recommendations, and as such, we were continued to tonight's meeting. The staff report before you also provides some additional information for your consideration on Measure H specifically to spot eight, the service provider area eight, in which we're found, in terms of the cities that have funding for the RFP process that they went through, for your consideration as it relates to the recommendations before you tonight. And with that, we'll turn it over to Council and Commission for discussion and for action that the Council may wish to take on the three recommendations of the Council. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take some comments or questions from the Council this time. Are there any? See, no one has plugged in. Any of the Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm Commissioner Reagan. What I wanted to focus on is that we made the recommendation that we have a plan for homelessness, done over the next six months, and I think, I share Commissioner Matucci's concern that that's a bureaucratic response, and it's easy for a plan to be a rather global thing, it goes on and on, planning sorts of things. I think for a plan to be useful, it has to be specific and strategic. I think for each item within the plan should include what the subpopulation of homeless people are we're trying to address, what the particular strategy we're trying to use is, what the particular partners we're trying to have are, and what the city investment or involvement is on the thing. And I think it would be good for the City Council to today respond of what particular to give us direction if you do pass this recommendation, what direction our plan, what particular populations are you interested, what particular strategies, what particular partnerships, and what particular city involvement. To give an example, a couple of quick examples that I think go with things I've heard the City Council be interested in, there's been some talk about safe parking lots as a strategy. I think they have to say, so what does that strategy match with what populations? Do we want that to be only, for instance, people who have jobs in Torrance? Only people who have city, who have schoolchildren within city schools can park there? Whose land would it be? Would the city have involvement in extra policing and things? Who would we partner to do these things? Because how it would turn out can be very different on how you do this. I want to particularly address the concern of Commissioner Matucci that led to this meeting in the first place, that he wanted to have things about the strategy of increased law enforcement, increased ordinances, and increased incarceration of people who are homeless. So I think looking at that same thing, if that's the strategy, what's the population that goes with that? We don't necessarily want to be doing more law enforcement on children in our school district, or more law enforcement on battered women, or old people, or people who are sick. Which particular subgroup? And I would suggest for that subgroup, we're looking for the subgroup that Officer Kim identified that says people who we have police complaints about, people who don't respond to outreach, offering them help voluntarily, and people who are using drugs or alcohol in public. That's the particular subset, rather than demonizing the entire group of homeless. And we said, what are the partners? And as Officer Kim pointed out, using the partnership of the normal county courts and normal county jail won't work, because they're over flooded with people from the rest of the county. We'd need to alter our own court system, for example, to have a small homeless drug and alcohol court here, who is dedicated to doing just this. Then what would the city be willing to put in this? Perhaps a case manager to help divert people into housing and jobs and substance abuse to track these various legal things, perhaps to use bracelets that could keep track of people and identify people who are within this subgroup. Once again, though, it's not just come up with a plan that says we want less homeless people, and too many of the plans look like that. So I very much take that from you guys, what particular subgroups, what particular strategies, what particular partners, and what particular city involvement, so it gives us direction as we go back, if you pass this to the next opponent, says, these are the things you want to actually have us flesh out specifically, so it doesn't look like the plans from these other cities that just are rather broad, or only do rapid rehousing and look at city, make a study of city lands to see where you could put a shelter. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Any other Commissioners?
Jimmy Gao, also on the Social Services Commission. I appreciate Mark's comments on focusing in on the plan, which by the way is required for a lot of the county services to even participate in getting some of those, but I want to pull back and get more of a big picture. I'm reminded of something that was said when I had the opportunity to attend the House Finance Committee's hearing on homelessness back in, was that August, I believe, with Congresswoman Maxine Waters? And she had a variety of people from all kinds of different aspects of serving homelessness. And one of them said something that I thought really kind of embodies what the context of the conversation that we're having in terms of where we're at right now. And they said this, "Over the past year, we've housed more people than we've ever housed before. But it's like being in a boat, and you're bailing water out of the boat. And over the past year, we've bailed more water out of the boat than we've ever bailed before, but there's a hole in the bottom of the boat, and the water is coming in faster than we can bail the water out. But we literally, the fact is, we literally housed more people in the past year than we've ever housed before." So that's one of the pieces to keep in mind in terms of the context of this conversation. Another thing, and I have something for everyone to look at, Rebecca, is a reminder of the County Strategy E5, which is decriminalization policy. Strategy E5 was also adopted into the Social Services work plan. And part of what that work plan strategy talked about is how the decriminalization policy focuses on directing individuals to services, and that provides an alternative to arrest and incarceration. And I think that when we're thinking about people who are facing this homelessness as their situation, that we want to make sure that we're not making it harder on people to get back on their feet, to get the help that they need, and we don't want to be doing things like towing away cars with people in them, and so on. So we want to make sure that we're doing something that's not creating more of a problem. So that would be one thing to keep in mind, is the decriminalization policy. And I appreciate your listening, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? See none? I see there's a number of people in the audience, and by a show of hands, how many people are signed up already to speak? Okay. And if you've not signed up, you'll be speaking after those who have signed up. And I would remind everybody, the reason we're here is to seek solutions to a problem. We're not here to criminalize anything, and we're looking to find guidance that is legal. And I'm certainly hopeful that somebody in this audience today has some idea that'll work within a compassionate community, a reasonable community, and a legal community, and we'll leave it at that. And we have some people who are signed up, we'll call those people first, and then after that, anybody else who wishes to speak. There's three minutes to speak. There'll be a timer put up on the big boards, and it cuts off after three minutes. So I'd really encourage everybody to try and get your message through, not be, you know, verbose about this, and if somebody's already said something, you say, you can say, "I agree with the guy in the orange shirt," and that may even suffice. Okay? Let's go.
Carol Tetsumi?
My name's Carol Tetsumi, I'm from Torrance, California. I'm asking you as leaders of the community to step up and show compassion to the men and women and children who are residents of Torrance, and who are experiencing either temporary homelessness or long-term homelessness. I'm asking you as leaders to step up to show compassion to men, women, and children who are Torrance residents, who are experiencing poverty. I'm asking you as leaders to step up, and by including all our citizens of Torrance, find a solution to homelessness, because I know solutions exist. And Mayor Fury, in answer to your question, "Built for Zero is a movement in more than 70 cities and counties, driving down the number of people experiencing homelessness and proving zero is possible." The real public policy issue to be discussed by City Council and the Commission is how do we solve the issue itself, not how do we criminalize it, but how do we solve it? We need more than point-in-time counts, we need long-term multiple nights of counts. We can stand together as a city, as residents, as businesses, as librarians, as educators, as landlords, and end homelessness for those under our care. Together, we can stand to build neighborhood partnerships to bring together local residents and institutions to actually change the conditions that produce homelessness. I ask that leadership step up and show some humanity to all the citizens of Torrance. Homelessness is solvable, we are strong enough, wise enough, resourceful enough. When we get a real number of those experiencing homelessness, we must demand that this number continue to go down, and the quarterly updates have been discussed. And who should be on the core team? I think a coalition of nonprofits receiving money from HUD, head of the local housing authority, these would be the partnering agencies, local VA medical center director, again, one of the partnering agencies. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Arthur Schopper?
All right. Good evening, Torrance City Council. Yes, it wasn't my fault. Thank you. You should all be able to hear me with or without. Okay? Yeah, my name's Arthur Schopper, yes, I live in this beautiful city. I absolutely urge, absolutely, we do need to seek compassion from the city and from the City Council, but the idea that compassion means not enforcing our laws is just ridiculous. There has to be enforcement of our laws. I provided the City Council a documentary, "Seattle is Dying: Lack of Enforcement Gave Us Seattle," and the miasma that it's turned into, where you have wild mentally ill, deranged individuals harming themselves and others, where petty crimes are not prosecuted and not punished. I agree, there needs to be a clear ordinance that private and public properties are respected, that individuals are not able to camp on sidewalks, they're not able to disrupt public passways. This is essential. It is not compassion to ignore these low-level crimes that hurt the public quality of life. Now, I've gotten an education on this, I've met homeless individuals. There was one woman, she was a victim of domestic violence in Cudahy, but she showed initiative to get help, and she was able to get out of that situation. I think domestic violence victims, that we do need to be aware of that, absolutely. But we're seeing a lot of homeless who are mentally ill or addicted to drugs, there has to be a clear intervention in dealing with these issues. This idea of throwing a lot of money at the situation, or just build housing to solve it, is missing a lot of other issues. You know, human nature has fallen aspects to it, and if you enable bad behavior, you're going to get more of it. And the concerns I've heard from a lot of citizens here in the community and business owners is that they see a lot of bad behavior that doesn't get held accountable. Now, as far as what the county has to deal with, or what law enforcement has to deal with, we have to be sensitive to that, too. I don't know where we begin. We've seen bad issues, you know, bad laws being shoved on us from Sacramento. I know that the school boards united together to push back against the local control funding being pushed away. Maybe it's time for us to work with other sister charter cities to fight against some of these bad laws, like Prop 47 and Prop 57, because people vote without seeing consequences, and we're forced to shoulder the consequences altogether for this. But there needs to be some clear enforcement, there needs to be clear guidelines to protect private property, to ensure that public property has a safe way to move back and forth, and let's get over this utopian idea that will solve all of homelessness, let's ensure a proper quality of life for all Torrance residents, and help those who want to be helped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, and good evening, everybody. Like to preface my comment, I go back in Torrance a long ways. Some of you might remember Torrance Drive-In, I worked there. Montgomery Ward, I worked there. Going back beyond, how about Surdebonne City? And before, the Delamo Mall was even there, and the dairies and all, so I've been around a long time. I would like to say that, yes, there's homeless people who are there with their own devices, some of them are addicts, some of them are mentally ill. There's also a percentage that, quite frankly, they like the lifestyle. They like being out there. And I don't know if you could call it malaleness, if they're consciously aware of what they're doing and they like it, perhaps. I'd like to say that a lot of people that are homeless aren't from Torrance. They're not from Torrance. So maybe some kind of record-keeping could be devised to keep track of who is here and who isn't here. As far as locating a place for them, let's face it, a lot of us don't want it to be in our backyards. NIMBY, not in my backyard, and who can blame us? Perhaps there might be some vacant commercial space that might be available somewhere with a private enterprise and community partnership, perhaps, I don't know. I don't claim to have all the answers, but yes, Prop 47 has created some problems for us. I just retired from teaching in Inglewood, I taught at Morningside High School, and I'll tell you something, a lot of your younger people, especially millennials, they don't know what accountability is, or responsibility, or personal respect for themselves or others. And I see that quite a bit. I saw that in my classroom, and I had to go ahead and take them aside, and slowly, by the end of the semesters, I got them to understand that, you know, it wasn't about them, it was about society in general. And I urged them to be good citizens, and perhaps that might be incorporated. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, neighbors. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone. My concerns is, the main thing is that it's costing me money, and it's costing my neighbors' money, and the local businesses. I live over by Delamo and Earl, and I've been working with a local business owner, and they've had homeless camping out on the side of his building. And so he has to pay to clean out all the trash, there's a mattress that's been back there for weeks, and I went and got estimates for him. Why should he have to pay? That's where they camp out. And the neighbors have called the police, and when they can, they come out there, because it's a low-priority call, and if they catch them, they send them on their way, but they're probably back there at 3:00 AM when all the neighborhood's asleep. And he's going to have to pay to put a fence up there to keep this one particular person out, and I'm sure there's other people camping out there. And then I've found homeless people hiding stuff in the foliage on our walls on Delamo, you know, because they have to stash their stuff somewhere, because they don't carry it around on their back all day long, and so they have to pay to trim this beautiful foliage so that stuff isn't stashed behind it, so that they're not hanging out there. And another concern I had is, I don't know if the police department still has it, FIs, field interrogation cards. We need to keep a record of these homeless. For instance, if an officer talks to someone at Delamo and Earl and sends them on his way, and he goes down to South Torrance, another officer will do this, and they keep sending them on and on and on, and nothing is ever done, especially if there are violations, and they let them get away with these minor incidents, and it could be the same people all the time, but there's no, as far as I know, record-keeping of them, and also, do we even know who they are? Some of them may not have identification on them, and they could say whoever they want to say is their name, and they could have warrants on them, but it needs to be more enforced, we should get more priority. And I realize that calling in, and when I've called in, when they're blocking the sidewalk and they're sleeping, it's a low-priority call, of course, I realize that. But lots of times, when I've called in, I get indifference, "Oh, another homeless person call," you know, and it's just, calling in, we just, it's just a negative feeling I get when I call in on the phone, but I don't let that deter me. I keep calling, and I tell my neighbors, if they have a problem, call me, I'm the unofficial neighborhood watch captain, and I'll call the police, you know, because we need to do something, but we need to keep better record-keeping. And again, my complaint, I shouldn't have to pay, my neighbors and the business owners shouldn't have to pay to clean out all the trash that they leave behind. Thank you.
Hi. I want to thank the Commission for spending a lot of time to do this report, and I have a lot of concerns that the fundamental problem cannot be addressed, that the problem is housing in the county. And to build the kind of housing that we do need would cost something like $30 billion, and the money that would go to that would go to developers, it would be a boondoggle to do that, so we're not going to be doing that. I also am very much opposed to incarceration. We're going to be paying more per person to imprison people than we would be to house them. So that is not only deeply inhumane, but it's unjust. So I would certainly hope that the Martin versus Boise decision would not be overturned. But I just want to speak, I did participate in four homeless counts, and I gave up, because I had the feeling that the homeless people had been moved so that there'd be an undercount. And then the next year, 2019, we heard of a massive increase, and that's what we're seeing in this report. So I have a social worker friend who had some suggestions, she was on the Redondo Beach Homeless Task Force, and she said that basically, that the social services that would qualify us to receive more federal money would be mostly to perform things that are not terribly helpful in housing people, to give them a California ID, or to get them SSI, or to get them general relief to apply for that. But she has worked with a lot of people on the coordinated entry system, and that doesn't work. So I really thank Commissioners Reagans and Gao for addressing the housing issue here tonight, and I hope that we will find more concrete, short-term solutions in order to try to house people, and, you know, people here are suffering from a nuisance, but the compassion that we need to have to people whose lives are messed up, we should also get them to get evidence from people.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nancy Wilcox?
I'm going to keep my remarks very brief, so I'm actually addressing you as a 39-year resident of Torrance, not, I'm taking off my homeless coalition hat, and I just wanted to just reiterate that a lot of the comments that the two Commissioners already spoke to, I really think having a very detailed plan is what's needed at this time, and that really will be, you've seen some of our comments as well, that really will provide the roadmap for how you deal with a lot of different subpopulations. One thing I didn't say is, in my written comments, was, we do believe that people who commit crimes absolutely need to be sent to jail, or they need to have some kind of enforcement, but then, one of the things that the plans can address, though, is when these people are released from jail, we don't want to just continue the same cycle over and over again, so if we can identify these people, get them connected to services, and then eventually get them housed, that's really what's going to help end everybody's problem, and really improve the quality of life for everybody here at Torrance, and we absolutely know how to, when I say we, the homeless services providers, they've been very successful in working with all different populations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Marlene Silva. You know, I wrote out a three-minute speech a week ago, sure that I knew...
Uh, you know, I wrote out a three-minute speech a week ago, sure that I knew what I was going to say and the reasons why I felt the way that I did, including hours of research that I've done on homelessness. And then today at approximately three o'clock in the afternoon, a homeless man died in front of me at the ninety-nine cent store on Pacific Coast Highway as I cleaned up his vomit. I can tell you that the business of homelessness involves real people, real lives, someone's mother, father, child, brother, sister. The business of homelessness is not a business. Um, they're human beings that are sleeping on the street, dying at the ninety-nine cent store. The homeless are here and they're here in large amounts and they'll continue to return in large amounts. You must set up a task force, a serious, a real task force. The greatest resource of information is going to be your police department, your paramedics, your fire department. They're dealing with the crisis of homelessness every day. Homelessness is not a freedom to roam and do whatever you want, that's long gone. These human beings are suffering and we as a sanctuary state and Los Angeles as a sanctuary city are begging them for them to come here. If this is what you ask for in voting, then you must provide them with the assistance that they need. This issue will not decrease, it will decrease, it will continue to increase. We've got perfect weather, lots of places to hide, a great place to live, but you must be razor-like in your intention. So, so far the community is not seriously affected by diseases that comes along with homelessness. The rats, the discarded drug needles, defecating on the streets and bushes, urinating on the streets, uh, businesses and bushes, you will not be able to stop the influx of people coming in unless you can provide a serious plan for this influx, which of course includes a place to stay either before actually coming here, options, and certainly a place to stay once they are here. I'm hoping that you will take this issue with the seriousness that it deserves and see to it that to preserve the quality of life here in Torrance, many things must be done and they must be done now. So, um, I thank you and I appreciate your time tonight.
Ginger Bradison.
Um, this past July, I came across a man defecating on Torrance beach with his pants down to his knees. Um, it was nine AM on a beautiful summer morning, the restrooms were open, the beach was filled with children and adults. I reported it to a lifeguard in a Torrance PD and they both told me they couldn't do anything. Um, this experience caused me to wonder why someone could be breaking several laws, including a decent exposure, and the authorities couldn't do anything about it. Then I learned about Martin versus Boise and the Ninth Circuit Court, um, you know, support of the case. I, I assume the cities were too fearful of lawsuits, but in, in the Supreme Court, um, in the, I'm sorry, in the Ninth Circuit Court, I believe that they did change it to the point where they couldn't camp before nine o'clock PM and after six AM, I believe. Um, I'm very concerned about what living and I consider to be social disorder. I don't think it's fair or compassionate to all involved, the citizens or the homeless. People with substance, um, use disorder and are serious mental illness need help, but they don't often think they do. Um, I see Torrance estimated thirty percent of the homeless have a substance use disorder or serious mental illness. I understand, um, when the city took the count, the city of LA, I think they had a lone number two, but then I think they raised it and I think it's more in Torrance. I commend you for filing, and I think it's the amicus brief, um, you know, to have Martin versus Boise, you know, um, overturned and we'll see. But according to your chart of cities, um, there are several cities with no homeless and quite a few that have decreased in homeless. What are they doing that are different than we're doing and could we implement some of their strategies? If Martin versus Boise is overturned, what are your plans? Will you, will you start to enforce our laws? And if it isn't overturned, do we not wanna continue as we are? Do we want our sidewalks, parks and beaches to look like Skid Row? Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jim and I've been a Torrance resident for the last thirty-two years. I'm here to express my concern about the quality of life here in Torrance. I have witnessed and been a victim of incidents that shaped this opinion. I have seen an elderly woman pull down her clothes, lean against the wall at a busy intersection and urinate. Also the increase in people removing recycled items from city containers. In one week, I've seen three different people that have done this via cars and bikes. I approached a guy on a bike carrying a large plastic bag full of cans and plastic bottles and told him it was against the law to remove item, items from city recycle bins. He told me to F off and mind my own business. I told him I was gonna take his picture and call the police, which I did. My last incident just two weeks ago involved a parking lot rage at Vaughn's on Lomita and Crenshaw by an individual who thought I'd looked at him too long while I was looking for a parking place. He approached my car after I parked and proceeded to use profanity, then opened my car door, took the sunglasses off my face. I told him I was just looking for a parking space. He threw my glasses back in the car and left. I filled out a police report and have an incident report number. I have always been proud to say I live in Torrance. I have said only good things about the schools, police and how friendly our neighborhoods are. Now I find myself only speaking about all the problems we seem to be experiencing. I'd like to see you give neighborhood watch groups a reference number so their calls to non-emergency services receive a higher priority than other non-emergency calls. As it was two hours before a police car drove down our street looking for the man that was taking the recyclables. As stated in attachment A, people who are brought to medical centers for fifty-one-fifty medical health evaluation are released to a nearby Torrance community. The agencies bringing these people to the medical center should pick them up on their release and return them to the areas where they are picked up. I hope we can get Torrance back. As stated in the Daily Breeze, Torrance is not perfectville, but it was closer to that years ago than it is now. I do want to commend the council for siding with the planning commission for rejecting a proposed forty-six unit three-story apartment complex as being too large for the site. I thank you for your time and your service.
Excellent. Teri Dado.
I'm Teri Dado and this is...
Judith Simmons.
Judith Simmons. There you go. Um, gosh, where do we start? Um, I've worked in the shelter world, if you will, for, um, I can't even tell you how many years, probably thirty-five. I've also run a shelter, run a mission, chaired, was on the board, and I don't, I still don't have all the answers on how to do everything right, but I do have some solutions that I wanna share tonight. The number one thing that I believe that we need to have is a strategy. This is can number A. This is perfectville. This is Torrance about ten years ago. We didn't have a whole lot of homeless in those days and it's turning into what's happening before our eyes, not having a Plan B. And here's Plan B. We've got so many people now that are homeless and we've gotta get ahead of this and not behind it like other communities have. So what's the solution? What's the strategy? I believe a lot of things that Mark said here on the service commission, he had some very valuable, inviable points. One of the strategies is we do need subgroups. The most important thing we need though is task force. And the people that need to be on the task force are like when I was running the mission, people who've worked in this business, who work day and night trying to address the homeless situation, the mentally ill, the disabled, et cetera. This is what we need, so I'm encouraging the commission to partner with these companies and other Harbor Interface, PATH, there's so many of them that are out there. They need to be incorporated into the social services commission because we're the people that are on the ground, we're the people that do the interviewing, we do the referrals, we call LA Hop, we do all of these types of things. The bottom line I wanna share with you in my last minute is, I'm asking the city council to appoint a task force and an oversight committee comprised of professionals, residents, city employees, the Torrance Police Department, people from the PTA, teachers, the neighborhood watch and others. Together, everyone achieves more and this is what we need to do for Torrance, to bring Torrance back to this Plan A, so, or Plan A so that Plan B doesn't continue on and on. So I thank you for your time and, um, good evening.
Ken Thompson.
I've been very impressed with the speakers so far. I think all of them have expressed compassion and the need for our city to address this very real problem. One of the things that strikes me is that Torrance is probably one of maybe twenty thousand cities within the United States and we're not the first city to face this problem. I would like to ask, this is a joint meeting, I believe, I'd, I'd like to ask specifically our commissioners, uh, Gao and is it Reagan, the other one? Have you actually looked at perhaps the top ten or the top twenty cities that have attempted to address this problem and use them as case studies? And see how well have they been able to address the issues? What are their successes? What are the areas where they might be improved? You could go through those case studies of ten, fifteen, twenty cities and I think you would be able to come up with some really solid recommendations that are not only compassionate but legal and especially that are practical. So, um, I really appreciate all of the issues that have been exposed here tonight. But if we're really serious about having solutions, then let's look at best cases, best practices. And let's see, among those best practices, if there's some of these things that can be adopted and incorporated into a master plan. And I'd like to hear maybe a direct discussion with the, with the commissioners.
Sir, that'll be another time. That'll be at another time. We're just taking testimony at this point.
Okay, all right then. But, um, then I would just like to encourage that process to take place. I think that the, the search and development of the case studies would probably be best done within the commissions, is that right? Mr. Gao, Mr. Reagan? Okay, so maybe I could work with you?
Sir, there's, there's going to be meetings then.
Thank you.
If we adopt the, the recommendation of the commission, that's exactly what we're gonna entitle them with. That'd be an opportunity to really share all that information. Thank you.
Andy.
Good evening. Lots of people said the things what I was gonna say, but my main point would be, we have two dogs here. One of them is the homeless and one of them is the mentally ill. So I used to be a homeless for like four, five years. The best time I ever had in the United States of America. No phone bills, no water bills, nobody bothered me, no police showing up at my residence, no freaking tickets, no nothing. I did not break into anybody's house, I did not steal. I went from swap meet to swap meet and enjoyed life in America. But I'm not mentally ill. You guys talking about homeless who is mentally ill and the great president of Ronald Reagan who is celebrated and this and that, he got rid of the mentally ill people, they closed down the mental facilities. And all the homeless people, not the one like I am who enjoy to be homeless, they are all on the street. I was living happily in my van down by the river from Nevada to every city in California and I was making money, I supported myself, I never had a slice of government cheese. So, on the other hand, the people who President Reagan released because they said the families want to take care of the mental illness and the mental people. Now that was a policeman or a retired policeman in Orange County, his own son was beaten to death by two Orange County policemen. Now, if a police retired officer who has very, very good, uh, paycheck or pension and very good health insurance, if he cannot take care of the mentally ill son of his, he's get brutally beaten to death in Orange County in a bus station, okay? So that guy wasn't a homeless guy, that guy was a mentally ill guy and his own father did not take care of it. So society should care of this mentally ill people, not on the street, not giving them tickets, not where the police take them, they need mental health care. Because that's why they on the street. I wasn't on the street, I was in my van down by the river.
Thank you.
Josie Vanderpoel.
Good evening, mayor and council. We do have a problem with the homeless. I hear it, you hear it. Save Our Neighborhood is a group of Torrance citizens, thousands, that our mission is to preserve the quality of life, our number one mission and goal. I don't hear anything mentioned, very few and not very often, that Torrance is a charter city. Most people don't know that and they don't know what a charter city means. It means that the city has the right to govern its own. They have a charter that they follow and they can oppose the state laws as some cities are doing. I think that it's time that the city of Torrance stands up for their charter and fight for us people. Let us govern our laws, our policemen can't do what the ordinances that they have to follow, that the homeless are breaking. I mean, residents, businesses, churches are all taking the consequences of homeless, the damage, the financial, uh, financial part that these people are creating. Yes, they need help, but there are also lollips being broken that are ordinances that we have that we can't enforce. Wouldn't it be wonderful if Torrance be the charter city that leads the other charter cities to fight back, to save our ordinances, to be able to rule our cities again? You are our leaders, we look up to you to look out for us. So please, take our stance as a charter city. Let's fight back. Thank you.
Anybody else sign up?
No one else signed up prior to the start of the meeting, your honor.
We got some new card there.
Can I go up again? I have something to say.
Anybody who wishes to speak, I'd encourage you to fill out a, a blue card.
June Lee.
Blue cards.
Blue cards, blue cards, blue cards. Can we speak again if we've already spoken?
Colleen Dames.
No, just wants...
Are you the keeper of the card?
I guess so, I'm the secretary. It's okay. I guess so. I'm the new secretary. It's okay.
Rebecca.
Honorable Mayor and our City Council, I know what I'm about to say is not going to be very popular, but having bought our first home in the late 50s and raising three children here, I accidentally bought the house here. I had no idea what Torrance was about. I had no idea they had the best teachers. I had no idea they had the best police departments. I had just lucky, and I've seen it change a little bit. When you see people that are complaining about people using bad health apps in their own front yards, that's not Torrance. That's not even a decent human being. So consequently, they do need help. But I don't think Torrance needs to start building places for them all to live. And you're not taking care of the mentally ill unless you can put them in an institution of some kind or a surrounding where they can get out to the public. Children and women especially, they complain about it more, as I've said before, than the men. Men can handle another man maybe coming at them. Women can't, children can't. This isn't the kind of city I think everybody here pays taxes to be in. I think they chose Torrance because you are a great city. But you start doing this, figuring out where to put thousands of people, and the more you have, say you're doing it, the more are gonna come. That's what happened in LA. The mayor shouted from the rooftops, "We're building homes for them." Well, naturally, they're gonna come here. They come here from other states. I just can't believe that you really want to continue making arrangements for them. I do think, and I think it might be wrong, that the women and children need a parking space at night that are living in their vans and cars.
Yes.
I really believe that. But if that institutes you being a city now that has to take everybody, then I have to be against it, and I'm sorry. From what I understand, San Pedro gets $6.5 million to help them with their homeless. And of course, our people go there a lot of times too, I believe, through the help of these people. But Torrance can't do that. Who's gonna give you the money to take care of them? I don't think LA County's gonna give every single city some. I do want to thank our police department. I don't think they're hired to take care of people on the street. They've got too much work to do. We forget the crime that goes on. And I do admire our police department, and I thank them a thousand times over. I'm sorry. Oh, this is my biggest thing.
Melissa Wright.
Next time, you start with the big thing.
Disease, okay.
Start with the big thing.
Disease, okay. No, for her. I'm gonna, my population that I'm gonna kind of like to address, to me, is the most important one, and that is the group that refuses any help. Because I think we do, we need to get these people off the street. And I'm glad some people like to be homeless and drive around in their cars, but I had wrote myself a story. It was like, I remember as a teenager growing up, couldn't wait to get out of the house, and I was trying to figure out how much I'd have to work and how many roommates I'd have to have before I could move out. And I bet you a lot of teens do that. I never thought for a minute, I'm just gonna go live on the street. And so it's just, my question is, where do they go to the bathroom? Going to the bathroom and making a mess and showering, not showering, is the biggest issue and the trash. And so this is where I'm talking about the people who do not want to be helped. I am very compassionate, I tried, I've been on a lot of charities, I've been in programs to help these different people. I say we keep helping them, knowing that it's temporary, it's to get them on their feet and move on, and it's not forever. But these people who do not want to be helped, we need to have something to do with them. We talk about them being arrested, well, as was mentioned before, you arrest them, you have to take all their stuff with them. Where are we gonna put them? We're not gonna put them in a jail, we're not gonna take all their stinky stuff, excuse me if it's not stinky, but it's probably dirty and stinky and bugs, someplace. So I'm wondering if perhaps we can get together with other cities and have an area that those people who don't want help, they can all go live together somewhere. I said even if it's cement and it can be hosed down, you know, after they leave each morning, I don't care. But that was, it sounds terrible, but that was my suggestion, and keep on helping. The other questions I came up with was, I don't even know what a shelter consists of. So maybe later on, when we're educating our community, and that's questions I had for the last meeting, things like, what is affordable housing? What is a shelter? What do we have to provide, especially if this Boise thing keeps going? What do we have to provide? Because maybe we need to get help. And as far as the people living in their cars, I mean, if that's what they need to do, I could totally understand that, and that's really sad, but at the same time, they need to use the restroom and take a shower too, so we need something to do with that. And I'd be fine with that. Let me just see, keeping the education going, bathroom showers. Assistance is only temporary, and I really have a problem with helping someone and they never have any plans to get out of that situation. I think a lot of us see people on welfare and other programs where we support and support and support with them taking no action. And whoever said it was legal to be wherever you want, live where you want, it's not, it's not legal. Thank you, my time's up. Tom.
Name again.
Tom.
And the clerk has advised me, some people have put in another card, you only get to speak one time. So if you spoke already, the other card's gonna be postponed. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Tom, and I wanted to focus on one of the core issues of homelessness. We all know about the high cost of health care. Kevin McKean from Santa Monica City Council, mayor at one time, commissioned a study and found out the city of Santa Monica would save itself $6 million if they adopted a single payer scheme. Our city could do the same thing. The problem is that my daughter, your son, any number of us have children that are living paycheck to paycheck. A broken arm, a broken leg, a heart attack, a stroke, right, a stroke, can lead to loss of employment, loss of housing, and we need to address the cost of health care. Perhaps we support single payer health care and remove that core reason for homelessness. Thank you.
Michelle Lopez.
Honorable Mayor, Council members and staff, and my neighbors. I don't think this is a lack of housing issue. This is a mental illness and substance use disorder issue. There are at least 90% of those living on the street that are suffering from drug addiction, mental illness, they're medicating themselves. And I think what we need to do is, we need to treat the cause rather than just the symptom of homeless. So that is something that I think we need to change the laws, have mandatory facilities set aside to help the mentally ill, get the needed care and medication that they need, decriminalize drug addicts, treat them compassionately, and help them to get them off of their addiction a lot sooner than later. You can ask parents that have children that are suffering from drug addiction half their lifetime, because the laws don't allow them to be a parent and put them in a drug facility that they can get their help that they need, they're needed. They sign up in rehab and sign themselves out, and it's taking a long time to get somebody the help needed. I have a friend that has two sons that are suffering from heroin addiction. One got into legal issues and now is in a mandatory program, and that saved his life. So I think what we need to do is treat the cause of what's going on and why so many people are on the streets homeless. Yes, there are some that are on the streets because they lost their job, they lost their house, but we also need to consider the fact that there are a large percentage of people living on the street that need our help. And we can't just let them sleep in tents when they don't even know what's best for them. We need to do that as a community, we need to come together. It's not fair for them or to just walk around not knowing if they're ever gonna see the light at the end of the tunnel. We wait for them to hit rock bottom, I don't think we should allow that as a society and the community. And we expect you to lose sleep at night thinking about this. Banning vaping.
Sherri Weaver.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Weaver, and I'm from Harbor Interfaith Services. We are the lead provider for homeless services for single adults, families with children, and transitional age youth. I had wholeheartedly planned on coming in here tonight and listening to the community just to get a sense and a feel, because I need to know what my community's makeup is, what they're feeling, and it's not too uncommon that one of the 27 cities that I work in, Torrance tonight, is feeling the same thing that I feel in every community that I walk into, that are being affected by people living in the streets. I think that's the number one thing that we heard tonight, is that we have people that are living in the street that have substance abuse issues, which is about 33% of the total population of anybody experiencing homelessness, those that have mental illness. What I'd like to provide to you is some stats. Last year alone, we housed over 410 households. That includes men, women, children, vets, transitional age youth, aging out foster youth, those with mental illness, those with substance abuse. And what I'd like to tell you is that we have a 95% retention rate. One of the things, one of my greatest fears back when we started the Coordinated Entry System, was how we were gonna address people that had ongoing mental health issues and substance abuse issues. What I will tell you is that, yes, I agree, they need treatment. But I also found that once we get folks into housing with those wraparound supportive services, their conditions begin to change dramatically. One of the other things that I used to be, before I was a social service provider, I've been in homeless services now for 18 years, is I was an LA County Deputy Sheriff. So I understand homelessness too, from the law enforcement perspective. I went through the academy to help get the bad guys off the streets, not lock up people that didn't have housing that returned to environments that weren't healthy. I remember many times when I worked at Silver Rand Institute, and I used to see women get released, and I could see that nervous anticipation of going back into that unhealthy environment because they lacked housing. These are some things that we need to start to look at. The cost of people living on the streets is three times as expensive as it is to house them. If this is gonna be a good business model and a good business practice, please keep in mind the dollars and cents. One of our neighboring communities, Redondo Beach, has put together a homeless city plan. We work side by side with law enforcement, we've eked out their top 10, and we have gotten them permanently housed. I want you to keep that in mind when you start thinking about the plan for this community. Thank you.
Shannon Griffith.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and neighbors in Torrance. My name is Siobhan Griffin, and I've lived here in the city of Torrance for 44 years. And I wasn't gonna speak, but I just have to. I was off work for the last seven months with a broken leg, so I was out and about and seeing what's going on in our city. And I had an experience with a homeless person that was so scary. I thought to myself, this really could have turned out quite horrible. I was driving into the parking lot of CVS off of Anza, and there was this man laying there right against the back of CVS, and he was three sheets to the wind. And he could have just rolled, by the time I realized there was a person there, if had he rolled over, he could have rolled right underneath my car and I could have killed him, and I wasn't even driving fast. And it was so upsetting for me to see him there, not only because he's somebody's father, son, brother, child, but the worst part was, is to see, this was at 3:00 in the afternoon, and there was kids walking home from school looking at that. And that's just frickin' unacceptable for that to have be going on. I have great compassion for the homeless. I think the homeless that want to be helped, we should help them. But we cannot allow people to be laying in our streets, laying on bus stops, all jerked off on drugs and alcohol, and just that becomes acceptable, and we just walk by and do nothing. I called the police, and they came, but he was there for hours. And it just, how can this, how can we tolerate this? And what would have happened to me if I rolled over the top of him? Would his family come back and try to sue me because I killed him possibly? Would they try to take my home? You know, this is a huge liability for me, us, you guys, our city. I work at one of the big hospitals here in Torrance, and I see homeless and mentally ill every day. And we need to address this, we need to come up with some kind of a plan. We just can't keep talking about it at every meeting, and talking about it, and talking about it. We need to get on this before this becomes downtown LA or Seattle. This can't be acceptable, and we need to make an example for other cities around us. We need to stop this crap, and we can't have kids walking home from school, looking at people, seeing people laying around drunk and doped up, and it's just, it's horrible. It's, these people need help, but if they're not gonna take help, we need to come up with a plan for them. I don't know what that's...
Thank you. Nobody else has signed up? Anybody else wish to be heard? Come up and state your name. Well, come on up!
So, hi, my name is Linda Mau, lived in Torrance for 33 years. You should definitely adopt the report and start a homeless task force, just since you're gonna vote on that. Can we just say that? That's my recommendation. A little background of me really quickly, because I think it's very relevant. Professionally first, I am a construction manager for many of the nonprofit developers of facilities and housing for homeless and affordable housing and various populations of need. I've been doing it for 15 years, about 25 properties in three counties. And personally, as a resident of Torrance, I participated in one of the homeless counts, and our church is one of the faith organizations that's involved in Family Promise, where families come rotating through the social halls of various organizations a week at a time. Last time we hosted them, there were three young families, a couple with a three-year-old and one-year-old, a single mother with a five-year-old, and a single mother with an infant three months old. None of them were mentally ill, none of them were on drugs. They are poor, and they're living in their cars. We learned last time that the largest population we have is living in their cars, they're not on the streets. But the ones on the street are the most troublesome, as I have learned in my travels in these projects. And that's something that I wanted to address, is just looking at the, you're gonna create a homeless task force with city staff and partnering agencies, whoever they are, and you choose, make sure they understand us. What I've learned is that you just can't pick up like what they did in Santa Monica, Long Beach, or Irvine, some of the cities I worked in. We're Torrance, and it needs to fit Torrance. Maybe they don't have a huge regional mall like we do, you know what I'm saying? We're different, and we have a different population, and so there are certain things that do work, there are best practices, but whoever it is needs to understand us and where we are. And also, then when we make our goals, I hope we don't just copy and paste like some of these cities do, and that we make specific goals for us. I would recommend some short-term goals. I don't know how you guide the task force, but short-term goals to alleviate the, obviously the police spoke last time, and we also learned how our city agencies are affected, as well as the residents and the businesses. Maybe short-term goals as well as long-term goals, because that is something that maybe could, you know, relieve some pressure. And also, just the goals, I don't mean to pick on Redondo and Hermosa, but they were the first here. But their first goal is so very vague, and then Hawthorne is so very specific, and I don't know which one is good or not, but these are examples. The first goal for Redondo and Hermosa is continue to develop and strengthen the city's response to homeless and ensuring community safety. That's the sentiment, and I'm not sure it's a goal. Where's the goal on continuing to develop, right? So, but then on the other hand, you had Hawthorne, very, very specific. Whoops! Reduce the incidence of homeless, reduce the period of time, improve access to services.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Come on up. You know, just sitting down again is not going to make it faster. You have something to say, come on up and get ready. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm not going to take it personally that I filled out two cards and they got lost, because you've heard from me before. But my name is Michelle, I'm a Torrance resident, I work for 1736 Family Crisis Center. My, oh, thank you. My office is on the corner of Hawthorne and Carson, so that's, we're kind of in the middle of the city. I can make this short by saying I agree with Mr. Reagan's, as far as our plan needing to address a different sub, the subtypes of the homeless population. The homeless population isn't one homogeneous group of mentally ill substance abusers. We have, you know, our agency serves, if you're not aware, we provide services and shelter for victims of domestic violence and human, she knows behind me, domestic violence and human trafficking. We have homeless services for veterans and their families. We have a youth shelter for kids ages 10 to 17, and we have just started a youth outreach team that focuses on kids on the streets ages 12 to 22. Our funding is specific for that age because it, there's a need. We're very aware that each one of our populations has a drastically different program, because each one of the populations has a different need. So, yes, I applaud the Social Services Commission, first of all, for coming up with this proposal, and, yes, I agree with Mr. Reagan's wholeheartedly. Because we're a Family Crisis Center, people walk in, and I've been exposed to different populations that need help. And, yes, we've had the 19-year-old that has graduated from one of our Torrance schools that is struggling with a domestic violence situation coming to us for help. We're able to help her because she's in our demographic that we help. We've also had a family walk in, because we say Family Crisis Center, they're looking for services. They took the bus because they didn't want to pay for gas to drive their van, which had all their belongings, because they were homeless. Dad had lost his job, they were evicted from their apartment, mom was working, and their two kids are enrolled in Torrance schools, and they came. What do we do? They were scared, they were, they didn't know where to go, and we couldn't help, we didn't fit within our paradigm, but we were able to refer them to services. We had a homeless woman come in, she was on her second day of being homeless, and she was scared, and she didn't know what to do. We need a plan, and we need a specific plan for every different demographic, and that's just what I'm here to say. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm really not with any organization, other than Rejoice Ministries, and I just am working on a project that I'm very excited about. I think it's very effective, it would be, if we could, all the cities would implement it. I think we could get a lot of the people that are just homeless but are sane, clean, you know, sober, just experiencing financial difficulties. And it's based on, when I was young, I first moved out into a guest home, and I loved it because it was in the backyard, had its own yard and everything, and lots of windows and some charm. And I found out I can establish or create those for like $12,000, a large studio. And really, that's, you know, I could probably get donations and cut it down with a community building, and hopefully lands donate it. It could, this could, you know, go viral. And I believe it will be a good inspiration for those who are on the street, and they can be sorted out to get serious, to clean up their lives, and take a hold of real concrete steps to live a sane, productive life. There will be some that will not take that at this point, you know, even seeing the good. These studios are adorable, I call them stylish studios, because I found out it doesn't cost very much more to make them really appealing, charming, and, of course, they'll be a community center, but everything, they'll be, you know, it won't be crazy people there, they'll be sane people there, and, of course, they'll have support, you know, to function. And I believe it's really a viable means of getting the people going, you know, getting the ones that are healthy off the streets, and getting the ones that are willing to get healthy into rehab. And hopefully, the others may be mentally ill, and, you know, it'll sort out what really needs to be done with them. But I don't think there's anybody that's a throwaway. I think we just need to, you know, be willing, like Mayor Garcetti says, you know, maybe some person couldn't do everything, but we can all do something. And like for Habitat for Housing, they said they'll volunteer, you know, to build. We just need people willing to give up and share, you know. Are there some lands in Torrance that you could donate, you know? We could get housing, and these are, I wish I had a portfolio to show you, adorable little houses, and the people will enjoy living in them, they'll restore self-esteem, and, like I said, these people are not crazy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Seeing no one else, is there a motion from the City Council to concur with the Commission's Specifically, the recommendations are to accept and file a proposed homelessness report by the Social Services Commission, and B, approve staff's recommendation that the Social Services Commission prioritize the creation of a homeless city, a city homeless plan, and return to council for its adoption and for quarterly updates on progress. And lastly, it's to approve the staff's recommendation to direct the city manager to explore creating a homeless task force comprised of city staff and partnering agencies. Councilmember Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor. On the recommendations, do we have any outlook on possibly adopting an ordinance or drafting up an ordinance for adoption? I don't know who I'm asking. Is what's confusing about these joint meetings, who's, who to talk to?
Yeah, exactly. The discussion of the Martin versus Boise case is on the council part of the agenda. There are no proposed ordinances tonight for the reasons stated in that item, but basically it boils down to the case is up for what's called certiorari, we're seeking review to the US Supreme Court. But right now, we are bound by that decision, so unless you have enough shelter beds for your homeless, and there's a slew of unanswered questions based on how Boise is worded, but at a minimum, unless you have enough shelter beds for the number of your homeless population, you cannot enforce any laws that deal with the condition of being homeless, namely camping or sleeping, or any of those kind of normal conditions.
Okay, so, on the recommendations, doesn't really talk about not even exploring possible an ordinance with those, I guess, requirements?
As part of this one, no. If you want to, in item 9A, I believe that's the number, staff, one of the things that staff asks is ask for directions on next steps to take, so that could be the point, that council could give direction on that.
Okay. When we do 9A, this is for clarification for me, when we do 9A, I mean, when we close this off, it doesn't seem like we're moving in any direction other than doing the same old stuff that every other city's been doing.
Well, again, as part of 9A, we can have a further discussion on that, but it, essentially, amending an ordinance without the city somehow providing shelter beds is meaningless, because the police won't be able to enforce it. So, a police officer who enforced a homeless or camping-related ordinance would be subject to 1983 lawsuit, personally, because the law is clear, as of this point, at least in the Ninth Circuit, you cannot enforce that. So even if they went up and we adopted a law tonight, the police can't enforce it until we get shelter beds. So that would have to be, if the direction of the council is to pursue some sort of ordinance amendment, which is something the council could choose to do, part and parcel of that is, we better find a way to get at least 180 shelter beds, because the homeless count had, I believe it was 226, and then by the belief 46 were in existing shelter facilities, or they were qualified as shelter facilities. So without those 180 beds, there can be no enforcement, because that would subject the police department, the city, and individual officers to personal liability.
And which I understand, and that's why I thought we were going to have a discussion tonight of possibly talking about shelters, safe parking spaces, et cetera, but it seems like the direction that we're doing here is we're completely shying away from a possible ordinance. I know that some cities, such as Manhattan Beach, they have much lower homeless count, but I know for a fact that they don't have any shelters, they made arrangements with outside shelters. Is that something that Torrance could possibly explore?
As discussed in my, that is something that could be explored. There are questions of whether you can actually provide shelters outside of your own jurisdiction. Boise is very difficult to, it's very vague, it's hard to understand, but a narrow reading of Boise is you must provide your shelters in your town. It's not clear, but that's one of the things that, if you read Boise narrowly, that it would be that you would have to provide the shelter beds within your own town. It's, again, it's a very vague decision, it just happened in April with the modified decision. But those are all things that, obviously, the Supreme Court may or may not address, and it may lead to years of litigation, as each city tries to figure out its way to go. The Manhattan Beach ordinance, just for the public's edification, was adopted in 2018, which is six to nine months before Boise was decided. Manhattan then kind of modified their ordinance by providing shelter beds. I believe they were first in Downey, and I believe now they're in San Pedro, and that's one of the questions, is can they do that? And there is no real answer at this point.
Okay, so hypothetically speaking, let's say that we do put together a task force, we put together a homeless plan, and that homeless plan, it says that we are going to build a shelter for 170-some-odd beds. Can Measure H funding be used for that particular purpose, for actual housing?
No, no. H specifically avoided construction of any housing as such. The plan would allow us to get funds from the county to assist individuals with mental health and other types of activities, but it does not provide any construction monies as such.
Okay, and I actually already knew the answer to that, but I wanted you guys to say it. And the reason I wanted you guys to say it, because it brought me to my next point, is I was against Measure H, because it didn't really provide much of anything, other than more outreach managers, programs, there's, you know, when I said last, two weeks ago, that it was a bunch of bureaucracy, that's what I keep on seeing, is a bunch of bureaucracy. Bottom line is, the people want these individuals off the streets and into programs. That's the bottom line. Like the lady that almost ran somebody over, that gentleman should have never been there to begin with. And I find it frustrating when I hear a sinking ship. That's a sinking ship, Jimmy Gao. What you described as a sinking ship in Los Angeles as a county is one big sinking ship. Now, unless we move towards getting these individuals, I'm talking about the individual 30%, 40%, 90%, whatever that number is, it's the individuals that are intoxicated, drug addicts, mentally ill, soiled, sitting on our bus benches, defecating in our streets, in our parks, unless we move towards getting those individuals off the streets and getting them into help. Now, some might say, well, you know, you're mean, you just want them incarcerated. I don't want them incarcerated. You know which ones I want incarcerated? The ones that are breaking the law! Because since when defecating in public is not, no longer against the law? Since when urinating, exposing yourself? I'll tell you a little story. A couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, I called Torrance Police, and, look, I understand you guys have priority calls. There was a gentleman on Pacific Coast Highway exposing himself. 20 minutes later, nobody showed up. I was told that it was not a priority call. At what point did Torrance become so blind to where we put compassion for a small few of mentally ill drug addicts, alcoholics? I'm not talking about the ones that are financially homeless. I'm talking about everybody else that chooses to be homeless. I get worked up, because you know what? In 1977, when I moved here, we moved, we moved, my family picked Torrance, you know why? Because of the beautiful, single-family residence. Beautiful neighborhoods, well-kept, up-kept, streets that were like bowling alleys. And decades later, all I see is neglect, and now, two, what, about a week ago, I had two transients defecating in the park across the street from my house, in the middle of the day. And I called the police on this. I actually even took pictures, and some of you complained that I took pictures, because it seems like if I don't take a picture, it doesn't exist. This is a problem, and you know what I see? I see a problem in this, that we're just going to do an extension of what Los Angeles is doing, which is failing. Los Angeles has all these beautiful task forces, but if none of that Measure H money can go towards building a shelter and providing beds and putting together an ordinance that actually gets people off the streets, we might as well just wrap everything up tonight and just go home. Because that's what I see. I see just a bunch of the same stuff. And some of you are going to say, you know, he's grandstanding. No, I'm pissed off. I'm pissed off, because, you know, I keep on seeing the same things over and over. I asked specifically on June 4th for an ordinance to come back, and I don't care how we get that thing done. Now, I know the mayor said that it was unconstitutional, I don't see any court saying that Manhattan Beach's decision, ordinance, was unconstitutional yet. Now, it might be challenged, but since when did Torrance stop fighting these challenges? Bottom line, we want people off the streets, these drug addicts, alcoholics, and mentally ill, they need to be off the streets and into programs to help them. I don't want them in jail, I want them getting help. Is that too much to ask for? And, yes, I'd rather, I'd rather fight the ACLU any day than a grieving family of a lady like in Long Beach that got murdered by a transient with a, guess what, an electric scooter. Her head was smashed in by somebody that was mentally deranged. I would rather fight the ACLU than fighting that. That was somebody's grandma, somebody's mother, somebody's daughter, that was smashed in. How about the gentleman that was with a five-year-old in his arms, got stabbed in the neck and died in front of his family at a restaurant? Are we going to wait for these individuals to just start killing in our street? Now, okay, Aurelio, you know, you're going off on a tangent here, but all I see, all I see, yeah, I know, mm-hmm, ten, because in your, in your world, it seems like, it seems like we need to just accept what's going on as the new normal. I refuse to accept this as the new normal. This is not the new normal, this is not Torrance. We need to get these individuals off the streets, and I don't think we need to leave here until we figure it out. 9A, 9B, 9C, 9F, I don't care what item we bring back, but we need to bring back an item that actually is going to do something, because what I see, it is just more bureaucracy. That's all I see. I'm rather disappointed. I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed that we haven't looked farther out. We haven't looked, we're just really just stopping at whatever. We haven't looked, we're, we're just really just stopping at whatever has already failed. Does anybody sitting up here think that this is actually going to do anything to get the drug addicts, alcoholics, and mentally ill off the street? Does anybody think that? Because what's in here is just an extension of what Los Angeles is doing. And, and, and they failed. Let's not do what Los Angeles does. $19 million spent in SPA 8. 19 million. $500,000 to upwards of a million dollars per transient being spent on housing. Do you actually think that giving an individual a house is what would have got that man in the gutter, off the gutter? Oh, here's the keys to a condo in Malibu? Thank you? You think that's going to solve the problem? Of course it's not. I think most people know, and we know it. But what I'm, what I'm, what I'm seeing here is failure in the making, and unless we actually truly talk about solutions, truly talk about an ordinance that's going to get people off the street, because I think some of the, once you get them into housing, that was one of the quotes, "Once you get them into housing, their lives change." The key word, "once you get them into housing." How do we get them into housing if, if the police officers don't have any leverage? They don't have an ordinance, they can say, "I'm sorry, sir," or "ma'am," you know, "in the city of Torrance, you can't sleep on the street, but, but we can provide you with this, this, and this service." Okay? That's a solution. That's a solution. Another quote that was made by somebody was, "Mandatory program saved his life." Keyword, mandatory. I say, well, you know, well, that's not, that's mean, that's not freedom. What about our freedom? What about our community? What about our rights? The rights of everybody else? Why does 99.99% of the population has to put up with this? Why? Why do we have to put up with it? That's what? That's why? No, you know what it is? It's failure. It's failure of our community, because, you know, you guys are here today because you want change. This is not change. And I'm sorry, I'm going to vote no on the recommendations, because it doesn't have an ordinance. It doesn't have a pathway to an ordinance. It doesn't have a pathway to be able to have the police department enforce anything. You go up to an individual, say, "Excuse me, sir, madam, you know, you can't live, you can't live on the street." It's like, "Oh, no, no, actually, I can't live on the street, because there's no ordinance." And that's what the problem is. We have no tool to enforce. We have no leverage. The leverage needs to be there so that we can push people into programs, so they can get help. Not incarcerating. I don't want incarcer, I don't think anybody wants people in jail. We want people to get help, but we're never going to achieve that unless we bring something solid. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurd?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support the recommendation of the Social Services Commission. The only thing that I would want to add is that, on the homeless task, that be comprised of city staff and partnering agencies, that residents, that we include residents as a part of the task force, and that make sure that the partnering agencies can include HUD and some VA